Is there anyone to come forward?
Forty-five eighty-nine, South Seager Street, Cassidy, Michigan. I think the state of Michigan is making a bad mistake on this marijuana. I seen Clint was on the radio that a hundred and fifty people a month is overdosing. A lot of them don't come out of hospitals. They're gone. We've got it here in town, too. I mention it to people, I tried to mention it to Tom, with this young man that worked for me, I sent him up to hospital. He couldn't pass the test, I let him go. Then he goes to Saginaw with another man, and they take the life of a young lady that just had a baby, about three months old. And this is what's happened with this marijuana. When you promote it, when you promote it, see grandpa and grandma, well, they're taking it maybe to help themselves, like this gentleman here, he's sick, he can't walk, so he takes it for pain. And we're ill, I'm eighty-five, so I have to take some pills, too. But I'm saying, go to the hospital to take the pills. Hills and Dills Hospital, that's where we go. You take your medicine there, you see your doctors, they've been in college for half their life, and they know, they know what to give these people for medicine. And they're getting this here, out in the country stuff, out there east of town, three of them lost their life, they shot two, one committed suicide, the other one's gonna be in jail. And the young man that worked for me, he's twenty years in jail now because he took the life of that young lady. And the grandparents, they may even be here tonight, but they gotta raise that child. This is what's happening. When you got so many people that's on this drugs anymore, you keep promoting it, you keep promoting it, and they, all the high school kids, they'll say, "Well, Grandma and Grandpa, he can take it, he helps me." So I go up to the high school, and I get a bunch of these poor young girls and boys that take the dope, and they lose their life. That's what's happening. When you promote it. Cassidy does not need this marijuana manufactured in Cassidy, Tom, I'm telling you, they don't need it. And the state of Michigan is making a mistake with their marijuana. There's expenses to this marijuana, too. And I don't have time to read them all off, but there's judges, and there's courts, and there's hospitals, there's police, there's, the cops are looking for people right and left, and there's just no end to it. It's just a bad, bad mistake. And my grandchildren, and my grandparents, my grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren, what kind of life are they gonna have? Can anybody here tell me what kind of life down the road they're gonna have with this drugs? Anybody wanna speak up on the council? Tell them. Tell them people out there, what kind of life, Tom, are they gonna have?
I'm Louis Primo again, sixty-seven, sixty-six Pine Street. I'm against the marijuana, it's my own opinion. It's not biblical if you're a Christian, read your Bible, it's not biblical. I'm gonna say this, it's not only into the kids, it's into the adults in this community. My wife and I was over in the trailer park on our bikes, we turned the corner, and that's all we could smell was marijuana. There's three people, two women and a guy, and he's on a motorcycle. He's a fireman, volunteer, and he is also a substitute teacher. Do we drug test our firefighters? Because before they fight the fire in my house, and I want them to have alcohol tests, 'cause they're all drinkers, and I know Tom's on, I know Midturn is on it, but there is some of them that are alcoholics, and they do drink, and they're coming out fighting their fires, and they're smoking marijuana now. Are they drug tested?
They should be.
They should all be.
They should be.
I think they should be drug tested frequently as a teacher, 'cause they're promoting it to our kids. And they laughed about it. They laughed about it, and he's driving a motorcycle. I think that's ridiculous, and they can't, they can't, it's proven, they can't do a drug test by driving. They have not, and they'll never come up with a THC level. And they can't even buy a pulling pair of power. You know, it's mind over matter. This man, he might need it. Go to the hospital, I'm for that. But, I've had heart problems throughout my surgeries, and throughout things, I was addicted to, but from that, I chose my own choice to get off it. It's mind over matter. If I can do it, they can do it. I used to drink alcohol, I ain't drank alcohol in twenty-some years. I don't need it. It's mind over matter.
My name is Jenna Getner, and I live at forty-six ninety-one Hospital Drive, Cassidy, and I have to say, and I'm sorry that some people, I wish all people could have gone to the meeting at the VFW explaining medical marijuana. The two men are going to, are willing to invest one and a half million dollars. And for Mr. Schneberger, hospitals do not help you always. My husband spoke already twice. He can't, he can't, nothing. We had pain shots three different times, but in the hospital, the doctor gave him a prescription, it does not help, gave him a phone and a doctor to go help him. Can't get in till November, what you supposed to do until then? And, this is another thing, drive up and down Main Street, Cassidy, how many vacant buildings do you see? And I think we need some industry, and if you could be there and hear those men explain everything. Twenty-four-seven security, they're gonna control the smell, you have to be background checked before you can be hired by them, and they're gonna send trucks in to pick up the finished product. We're not gonna have whatever you call people who are hooked on drugs. And in my opinion, certainly legal medical marijuana is better than opioids. It's killing people. I'm not saying there's not abuses, there will. Name me an industry that does not have any abuse. So I have to say, we are in favor of it, and if you could have gone to that meeting, those men would explain it all. And, you know, security and business, what, I forgot, forty thousand dollars a year, I believe they said, the first year, income tax for the city of Cassidy, they could fix that pool up, and nothing collapsed. So I really think that we should let them process medical marijuana here, 'cause there are people, pills cannot help. And I wish, I wish everyone could go to the meeting, or could have, Mr. Aaron was there, too. I think we are making a mistake by turning them down because of what people think without checking. That's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
My name's Chansey Ball, six-three, six-one Sixth Street, here in Cassidy, and I just wanted to come forward. This isn't a debate about the legality or the usefulness of medical marijuana. It's been determined, more than half the states in this country have medical marijuana laws, it's being grown somewhere, somebody is being paid to grow it. That's the issue on the table. It's been proven, it's a medicine. It treats everything from grand mal seizures to chronic pain, and it's medically legal, it can be prescribed. The question is, do we want to close the door on that whole opportunity that, of our town to grow, based on something that helps people? Yes, there are abuses of the policies, and yes, there are abuses of the substance, but again, twenty fifteen, twenty-seven thousand people died of opium, or opioid-related overdoses. This year so far, there has been no one who has died of medical marijuana overdose, hasn't happened. And so, I'm just here to implore you not close the door on this, don't legislate morality. I understand disagreeing with marijuana, but the state has decided, we're gonna have this program, so why should we not do everything we can as a village to earn something off of it? And that's really all I have.
Gary Volmer, four-twelve Monarch Trail, Lewiston, Michigan. Most of you heard me numerous times, so I won't take a long time. This just came out in the not-too-distant past, it's Time Magazine, Marijuana Goes Main Street, really explains a lot about what happens and so forth, and I've heard numerous people say the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan really is reacting to the constituents. In here, on page, whichever page it is, it says, "Growing Acceptance of Marijuana." In nineteen seventy-three, sixteen percent of the population in the United States approved. That was just a little after Cheech and Chong. Today, sixty-four percent of the people in the United States approve of marijuana. And we're not even talking medical marijuana, we're just talking overall marijuana. What we're talking about is medical marijuana, to assist people that have medical issues. So when we say the state, we don't blame the state, the people themselves, voters like you and I, are saying times are changing, and that everyone, you know, whether you agree or not, has to understand that times are changing. And, you know, we can talk jobs, we can talk a lot of different things, you know, which are very important in this community, but I think what we need to understand is, do we have to listen to the voters, the people, and what they want? So, that's all I have to say.
My name is Mona Piaskowski, I live at six-six four-five Third Street, and I am for it, and I am for it because I would like to see it in a contained facility. I do not like it, for people that have a medical marijuana card, they are allowed to grow so much in their home, which I don't think that's right. They shouldn't be allowed to do that. If I have something prescribed at the doctor, I mean, they get the cards from the doctor, if I have something prescribed from the doctor, I have to go to a pharmacy. I don't go home and process it myself. So we need to eliminate that, so if we have these facilities, hopefully, we can eliminate the home use of it, and get that under control. Because like we all know, the problems that we had east of town, if they weren't able to grow it like that, and if we had any facility, then it would've been more under control, and that wouldn't happen.
I'm Joe Van Alton. A couple of things regarding medical marijuana, whether or not you like marijuana, really it's pretty much irrelevant. This is simply an economic question. It's a legal business, it's a legal business because the people of the state of Michigan voted to make it legal in the state. So, like it, don't like it, at this point, nobody gives a rip, okay? So as of right now, as of last Thursday, LARA, the state agency that gives out licenses, has given out seven licenses in the state of Michigan. Four of them were for Chestening. Two are in our burden, one is a transport company out of Lansing. As you said, the last committee of the whole, I don't know if you got to go to Chestening and meet with them, or talk to them or not, but they're apparently all in. Carroll, two years ago, a year and a half ago, had somebody who wanted to put a million and a half dollars into a business right in downtown Carroll, they were gonna put it in a distillery. Village Council said, "Oh, they don't like drinking, they don't like alcohol." Nope. Everybody around the thumb jumped on those people. Bay City, Saginaw, all these little communities, Vassar, "Yeah, yeah, come here, come here, we'll be happy to take your million and a half dollars and jobs." If you think, and I'm not necessarily for or against the plant coming here, but if you thinking anywhere from two to five years, there's gonna be any jobs in that building? If you don't approve this, you're wrong. These gentlemen aren't done. They've found a business which is more profitable for them. So if you wanna have jobs here, that's the business they're gonna have. Otherwise, you're not gonna have a business. One more empty plant, what are you gonna put in it? So, really, you have two options tonight. One, somebody will make a motion to say, "Absolutely not, not in our town," and it will pass, and this conversation is over. Number two, what should've happened, when this all started, somebody's gonna make a motion to tell the village attorney to draft two ordinances. One, saying yes, and here's what the ordinance is. One, saying no, not now, not ever, and here's what the ordinance is. Then, all these folks will have something to look at, and decide, do we agree with the ordinance, or do we not agree with it? Those are your two options tonight, if I see it. Make a motion, no, never, no way, great, they'll take their million and a half dollars, and they'll be on their way. And tomorrow in the paper, or by Friday, you'll hear about every other town, Chestening will probably be on the phone tonight. We got a building for you, come on down. Or, at least get the, your attorney to write an ordinance, so people can look at it, to see, what are you even thinking about allowing to have happen here? Because until then, until you get an ordinance for people to look at, I mean, so you say, I mean, what else you can do today? Say yes, you still gotta have an ordinance, though. You haven't done it yet. Get the damn ordinance ready, then vote on it.
I live on Dodge Road in Cassidy, and as most of you know, I work for Gary, but that's not why I'm up here. I hope that none of you face what I faced with my son with Crohn's disease. He's had four surgeries, he walked in the hospital at two-hundred-and-sixty-five pounds, and he walked out at a hundred-and-fourteen. And he uses medical marijuana, and it's the only thing that stops his cramping and his ability to eat. So not only do I work for Gary and support it, I support it because I have a son, and I pray that none of you have to ever have to deal with that, and make a decision like, and have to make the decision whether you use it or not. But I do also think, as a business, as council members, you do have to make a decision. We have been through petitions, we have been through forums, we have jumped through hoops for you guys, and your elected officials, and I believe that tonight, you owe Gary and Gossa a decision.
Richard Getner.
If there's anyone else who hasn't spoke yet, they can move in first. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken or wants to speak? Yeah, that's the rules.
I didn't know he was.
Yeah, yeah.
My name is Gary Jones, I live at sixty-eight, I'm here in Rock, Cassidy, and I've found this issue closely with what I read in the paper, and various other people. And I had mixed emotions for a long time, I didn't know what way to go, but I guess the clinching point was when I, and I understand that this is a grow facility only, there will not be any of the other licenses involved, I understand from presentations given to us at the county level, prescribe licenses involved totally, if you wanna do that, and I understand this is only for the grow facility person. So, that being said, I, the convincing point was when that was clarified, that that in fact was the case. It would be just a grow facility, with security, state-of-the-art. I'm sure that Mr. Gary and his partner are well aware of the requirements, I know there's a huge amount of money, and I don't think they just wanna spend that kind of money and risk it. I don't think they would do that, I think they're smarter than that. So, with that being said, I just wanna make a comment regarding a little phrase that I use frequently, it's called a "carte de temps," it means seize the moment, you may not ever get another chance, you may not ever get another chance, as Joe said, they may say, "We'd like to have you come to where, wherever that may be." One other thing, in the same goals, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, so I encourage you strongly, look favorably upon this request.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, then Mr. Getner, you can come back again.
I'm sorry, Bill, coming up before, I didn't realize.
Yeah, that's right.
I've been through physical therapy three different times, they can't do anything for me. They make my legs stronger, but they ain't doing a damn thing for the hip. I went to pain management, I've had seven shots in my hip, it's still the, they hold two days, what am I doing the rest of the time? Now I'm getting pills from the doctor, it's supposed to help. Oh, it numbs it a little bit, I'm still in pain twenty-four-seven. I do very little around the house, I ride my lawn, or I hire somebody to do the weed whipping, and help with other chores around the house. I think, and beans it's only gonna be a growing thing, and they're not gonna process it here, there are gonna be, trucks come in, and it's gonna be shipped to a processing plant someplace outside of the city. And from what I was told, the city is gonna get a kickback from all of it that is sold, that came out of this plant. So, why can't we have it? There's gonna be security here, they're gonna have cameras all over, you have to go through very tight security to be employed there. So, I don't see anything wrong with it. What's to say Schneberger doesn't, doesn't have plants in his backyard? I can't grow it in mine, I ain't, and I don't plan on it, because I don't know how to process. This is gonna be processed, and you have to have a prescription to give it. It's, it's a no-no situation, is it? Either I do it, or else I go cut my head off, I guess, 'cause I can't stand it no Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Getner, that you got all that pain, but the drugs takes life, it kills, it takes lives. And that's the problem, that I can't find out and see, and can't understand, it's taking our lives, it's taking our people away, it's killing them. They got five of them every day in Genesee County overdose. That's a hundred-and-fifty people overdose a month. And you keep promoting it, you keep promoting this marijuana and drugs, it's not right. The life isn't worth nothing, right? It isn't worth a thing. Life isn't worth nothing no more.
Why don't you take gun and shoot them? And I'll be out of my misery.
Denise Hallwood, four-two-one Ninety-Eighth Street. I just want you to know, as a resident, I'm in favor of a new facility, a marijuana-growing facility, and I think you should all consider it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what you have in front of you is a resolution of intent. And as mentioned earlier, this action to have a grow facility in the industrial park would require an ordinance. An ordinance is a very time-consuming process, it's crafted by our village attorney, and then it would be introduced, just like we're introducing a white ordinance, and then a following subsequent month, it would be presented for public hearing and for approval. So what this resolution of intent is, is allowing the developers to know whether you're going to do, in fact, an ordinance, that would take a couple of months. So it's responding to them about what your intentions are to do an ordinance. So if you approve the resolution of intent, you support the medical marijuana grow facility. If you do not approve the resolution of intent, then you do not support a medical marijuana grow facility. So, yes vote on the resolution is support, a no vote is against it. And if you do approve the resolution of intent, you are, it is your intention and your commitment to doing the ordinance that would support a medical marijuana grow facility in the industrial park. It has not been crafted yet, unless there was interest by this village council, we're minimizing the financial impact to us, but we did have our attorney draft, review, and prepare this ordinance for your consideration. So I will read it for them, and if there's any questions, please let me know. Yes, afterwards, we'll vote on it, if there is a motion. "Resolved by Village Council, Cassidy, Michigan, whereas the state of Michigan enacted the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, Michigan Complied Laws, Section three-hundred-and-thirty-three point two-seven one-zero-one, Sec. two-sixteen sixteen, hereafter the Act, to license and regulate certain commercial entities to operate as growers, processors, provisioning centers, secure transporters, or safety compliance facilities as identified in the Act and. Whereas, the Act provides that a state operating license to operate a marijuana facility in a municipality shall not be issued to an applicant unless the municipality has adopted an ordinance that authorizes that type of facility and. Whereas, being duly informed and advised, the Cassidy Village Council has decided it shall, subject to its governing regulations and procedures for adopting village ordinances, adopt an ordinance to authorize and designate the location of medical marijuana facilities within the village of Cassidy's industrial park to operate as growers only, and not authorize any other type of facility as provided by the Act and. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Cassidy Village Council hereby makes a record of its decision to adopt an ordinance, subject to its governing regulations and procedures for adopting village ordinances, to authorize and designate the location of medical marijuana facilities within the village of Cassidy's industrial park to operate as growers only, and not authorize any other type of facility as provided by the Act, Michigan Complied Laws, Section three-three-three point two-seven one-zero, oh, two thousand sixteen. This is your resolution of intent for consideration." This resolution is available in our council packet on the website, which is www.cassidy.org.
It says, "Medical marijuana petitions, receive and file."
That is under Communications, that's not what we're considering right now. Under Other Business, Medical Marijuana Response to Business Proposition, on page one-twenty-five of the packet, is for your vote right now. The other's just a communication, that would be a motion to receive and file, you could do on that, that's separate. If someone wants to make a motion or discussion.
I will make the motion, put this up for a vote then.
Motion has to be to approve.
To approve, to approve this.
Support. Okay, motion is made, and second, to vote on the Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act. You will call?
Well, Missouri, discuss.
We need to vote, I'm sorry. Any discussions among the members?
I gotta say one thing, and I'll be brief. After the meeting at the VFW, I changed my mind on this thing. I was against it, but after listening to Mr. Getner and his issues, I got to thinking, oh, I'm sorry, I got to thinking that, I, my conscience won't let me deprive somebody that needs it, of that product, and if it'll help somebody out, I'm okay. And if it'll help somebody, I'll, I'm okay with it. But I'm against the recreational 100%. And I'll fight that all the way.
I am set, I'm not for it. I understand Mr. Getner and his pain. I do. But I think that if this resolution that we're making, if all that stuff was settled ahead of time, I'd be convinced that it would be all right. I just don't know what's going to happen, and I just can't, in my own conscience, vote yes more.
Yes, I have a comment. Couple of things. We've been going back and forth on this. And poor Mr. Getner. I don't know if he knows that he could probably get a medical marijuana card right now and go and get medical marijuana. So, even if this was proposed as Tom wrote it up in the paper, he wouldn't be able to get medical marijuana from this particular site anyway. So, there are places that are providing medical marijuana. I am not in favor of it. And I do have a family member that has medical marijuana.
I do.
I'm not in favor of it. I'm not in favor of it. And I resent the fact that when petitions were going around, that I was approached and told, "If we, as council, approve this, that Tom could get a $40,000 donation from Mr. Volmar for the pool."
That's not true.
He sat there. You said it to her, and you said it to other people that are in the audience.
I said that maybe possibly.
I'm speaking, Tom, excuse me.
There was never any conversation to Mr. Volmar.
You had a specific amount, and that's what you said. And I corrected you and said, "Tom, I would be, don't say that, Tom, because that's pay-per-play." And then you went and you told other people who came back and told me that too. I'm not for sale.
Trying to sell this.
I understand you're trying to sell it.
We're going together.
I would like to have my point. I would like to have my opportunity to say if that's all right.
Go ahead, Nancy. Make your comments.
Okay. I'm just saying, I don't like to be bullied. I don't like to be offered a bribe or an incentive to pass something. I understand the need for medical marijuana. I understand how it helps people. But there are many places in this whole state that are now going for medical marijuana and who are building facilities and getting, it doesn't have to be us. That doesn't mean I'm against marijuana for helping people. Not here. It's just not here. Just not here. I do not feel it's a good fit for this community. I think medical marijuana has its place. And I will not be bullied or baited or anything else to change my mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I get a comment.
Tom Higginson told me 3% we'd get from the state.
This is not the citizens' comments. This is the board's. Go ahead.
I don't understand what it means to be not a good fit for the community. You got places like Chestening. You got Juniota Township that's just voted for medical marijuana facilities, grow facilities, processing facilities. They've got stuff happening there. Chestening's got it. LaPierre, same thing. They approved some other locations. Tell me, why isn't it not a fit?
Okay. I'll give you a couple of reasons. We talked about the smell. And everybody's about the money. It's about the almighty dollar and the almighty money. And we need money for the pool. And we need money for this, and we need money for that. All the people that live in that surrounding area that are going to have the smell, regardless of whether you tell me there's no smell. There is a smell. And those people are not going to be able to enjoy their homes. We had people from a banking, a banking individual who said, "The property values of the people surrounding that area will go down." Do we need a $15,000 or $5,000 permit for every 1,500 plants? $5,000, $15,000, $20,000? This company, this company had a tax exemption in a Renaissance zone, if I'm not mistaken, for 15 years, which went off two years ago. So, they had a real good cut on their taxes, which they didn't pay, I don't believe. And now, we want to have a medical marijuana store so they can make lots of bucks? Mr. Volmar doesn't even live here. Lives in Lewiston. These people come in with their Mercedes, and then they leave the meeting, and they go to their home someplace, and they leave us sitting here. And we're going to have the smell, and we're going to have to support all the other issues that are involved in it. As I said before, as I said before, for everything that you bring up positive, there are contrary items.
You know what I deal with? I deal with the smell of somebody spraying manure outside this town, two miles out. When they tell mine, I want to get into that property value.
Calm down.
I will.
Let's keep this level.
Okay. So, anyway, I'm really enjoying this medical manure smell that's coming from outside of town, and it's producing my property values. I go outside at night. I can't enjoy it. That's multiple times a month. It affects the whole town. Are we doing anything about that? No, we can't. But my whole point is, they say that they've got filters on the facility. They should be able to control the smell. What's Chestening doing? Are they having any issues with it? I haven't heard any complaints about that. I think we're missing out on it. And if you really, if you want to vote it down, that's fine. Vote it down. We'll deal with the tax issue. As a matter of fact, what we can do is we can apply property taxes to those who don't vote for it. Of the tax revenue that we lose in the water revenue that we lose.
Can I just ask a question? We're just voting whether to do an ordinance. It'll come up to a public hearing. If we have attorneys writing the ordinance, that has to be brought up to a public hearing anyway.
But you're approving a positive ordinance.
Right, right. Yes, you're saying that you would support the ordinance. So, if you change your mind, you open yourself up to the ramifications of that potential.
Right. But we can, that ordinance can be written any way that we want. I mean, we can put within primary reasons as far as odors, you know, smell, and that. That'll all be defined in that ordinance, Mona. What they have to do.
You can craft the ordinance to meet the needs of the community. For example, what type of facility and location in the industrial park and some other parameters that are allowed by the LARA law and such. So, yes, you can be specific in your ordinance of what you want. Some communities are allowing all the different types of the processors, growers, transports, all that. So, when that ordinance is crafted, it would be based upon what the village council would like to see in it, and the attorney would comply, and then we bring it forward.
It's just to grow it. It's not to sell it. It's just being grown and shipped out. That's it.
Correct. That's what the resolution would be. Your intent would be to craft that ordinance.
You mentioned Chestening's operation. In fact, Pat, you were the one that brought the attention.
I certainly did.
After I thought I'd call down there, I have a friend down there that's in the minor business same as I am, sells the same company. His name is Randy Studdard. He's on a village council down there, city council. And his religious beliefs were against it. And he didn't believe in it. And he voted no on the council. He said, "In fact, we're going to have to have more police protection and be a lot of problems." He said, "I was totally wrong." They're hiring 245 people now working there. They're now putting in a processing plant. And within five years, they expect to have 500 employees. He said, "There's absolutely no problem. They have cameras all over the place, inside and out, and we have absolutely no problem. Never causing a nickel in more protection." He said, "I was totally wrong." And it is a good thing for us.
Mr. President, I did bring up Chestening, and I suggested that we go visit it, to the Chestening village. It was recommended to me to investigate. I also talked to the village administrator at the village of Chestening. And he shared with me how the operation was going. And I talked to him subsequently. He also told me that after the medical marijuana or the recreational marijuana vote in November, he did not know how that was going to impact the medical marijuana facilities because they will then be tested by their potency. And he didn't know how that was going to affect the ones that didn't meet the potency and what would be happening to those plants at that point in time. So, everything isn't all on your doubt. Everybody doesn't have all the answers to all the questions. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was, we were talking about all this money that we're going to get. And when the recreational marijuana is voted on and passes, which I'm sure it probably will, the medical marijuana excise tax will be eliminated. So, there won't be, it'll be on the recreational marijuana. So, that income that everybody's talking about, according to Representative Kentfield's office, that will be eliminated. That's what I understand.
Any further discussion on this? Can we move on? Okay, we will vote on the resolution of intent. Do you want to go call? You all call.
Trustee Barrios.
No.
Trustee Bieber.
No.
Trustee Heron.
Yes.
Trustee Kern.
Yes.
Trustee Piaskowski.
Yes.
Trustee Zabelinski.
No.
President Palmetier.
No.
And it is turned down, agreed to four.